Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. It's two weeks till Santa, and it's raining like crazy outside. So, anyway, glad to see everybody here. Let the record show that council members are here except for Odie, who called and let me know that he has a work commitment that is -- has him in Redmond right now. And so, that's why he's not with us. Council members, you have the minutes of the November 27th meeting in your packet, and do they meet with your approval?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I like moving to move.
Let's move to move. Let's move. Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Any visitor or public comment? Moving promptly forward under reports, just to add to your agenda, Mr. Klein's requested a little time at the end of today's meeting, and so we'll do that. Just to want to remind everybody, we will not have a meeting on the 25th of December. I'm sure everybody is happy about that. Just to let you know that I'm hosting a -- the Mid Willamette Valley Mayor's Coalition at my home tomorrow, so there'll be mayors from Polk, Marion, and Yanhill County getting together. We've done this for a number of years, and it's been a real popular item. Also want to draw your attention, council members, to -- and I think you've received email on this about City Day at the Capitol. The League of Oregon Cities is scheduling that and putting together to help advocate for city issues. I will be attending as a past League president, and I think our new city manager is going to also be attending, and so if you're interested in attending, please talk to Karen, and she can get you signed up. That's an all-day event.
The date for that is?
That's January 24.
I'm sorry, I'll be in Spain.
Okay. I don't know what to say with that other than that.
She doesn't want to make the commute apparently.
No, I don't.
Okay. I hope you'll send postcards. Moving forward, we have -- in front of you, you have a request for an appointment to the Library Board of Peggy Klein. Is that okay with everybody?
I move to approve her appointment to the Library Board.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
It says Peggy and David.
Dave is on extended vacation.
There you go. Well, we have two city managers sitting there today, and I think one of them's going to stand up and give a city manager report. Good evening and officially welcome to your first council meeting.
Well, thank you, Mayor and councilor. So, I just kind of want to go through a few things, and hopefully I'm not talking too loud. So, all the outstanding franchise agreements have been wrapped up. You have the last one tonight, except for Minnet. We'll probably use Charter as a template for that moving forward. The city attorney, Kristi Monson, has been asked to make a record response to the FCC regarding a ruling, the proposed rulemaking, some comments that was put together before the FCC. We felt that it was important that the city actually take a position and respond to those comments, which we feel could have been put together better from their side. City Attorney Connolly is drafting an agreement for the provisions of the homeless services at the gate, which we talked about. She's putting that together based on the conversation we had with council at the last meeting. Indy Landing Park walkthrough was held let pass with this last week. There are a number of outstanding items, as you can imagine. Weather is also playing a large role in that. There'll be likely a bunch of reseeding that has to go on in the spring, just because the grass didn't have enough time to germinate before the weather came. The hotel is proceeding per schedule, is on track for late spring, early summer opening. We had the opportunity to go and tour the hotel the other day, and they are really moving quickly in there. So, their contractors and their subcontractors are doing a great job. They're working closely together, and that project's coming along really well. We also anticipate the apartment townhomes clubhouse application be coming in fairly soon. They are also working really hard to get that before the city, so it's certainly to be made there. Work continues at the old city hall. They're trying to meet the new opening schedule for the brewery. We're hopeful to give them a temporary occupancy permit, so they can get in there and brew their first batch of beer, hopefully before the end of the year, and then the final condition or occupancy permit will become in 2019. On December 6th, Ramon Martinez was invited to Colonia Amustad, and he took along a couple of police officers with him, wanted to kind of just have some time to meet at their regular meeting. And they made some presentations, and we got some glowing reports back from them about being thankful for Ramon and for the Police Department coming in, just reaching out to that community. So, that was very well done. This Friday, Sean is hosting a small group from Corvallis, who wants to talk about urban renewal and the good things that the City of Independence has done. I think people recognizing all the hard work that's gone into that, and they want to come down and see how it was done here, and see how they can market their efforts in the future. 2040 Vision Plan, the RFP, has been out. There's been quite a bit of interest. The responses are due on the 21st, so there's still some time for people to respond to that. We're hoping for a great stable of candidates to do that project. It's an exciting project for the city, and we think it's a great project for consultants as well. Planning assistance, we've been working with AKS to make sure we have continuous planning services. They have agreed to stay on through what we're going to call a transition period. We think it's important that we bring on a planner at some level, so we're probably going to advertise for an associate planner or a senior planner. We're only hiring one. But we want to see what we can get there. Either one of those positions would be good, and that will allow AKS to transition out from providing counter support, which they're doing two days a week. We also have the COG, who's giving us a planner one day a week, so we have three days of counter service, and we're filling in the others. So, but AKS plans on staying on the long run to continue to help us with on-call planning and help us with those more difficult type of planning efforts. But then that'll give us someone to have our counter support here, as well as provide good planning services, which we will have need for for a long period of time. I've been having meetings with city councilors and with the management team. I've been nothing but welcomed here, and I've learned a great amount of information from everybody, so that time has been greatly appreciated. And I know everybody's going to thank David, but I just want to personally thank him for working very, very hard to make this a successful transition. He spent a lot of time with me, and he's made my job much easier to come in here, so. You have questions for me or?
Questions for the presenter? Any? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. And I think we have a staff report. Good evening. Glad you'll be hanging with us for a while.
Yeah.
I am as well. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I wanted to give you a very brief update on the status of some work that our Historic Preservation Commission has been doing over the course of the last three years, about, and let you know that in October, they agreed to move forward with a proposal for a draft update to Chapter 59 of the Independence Development Code, which is that chapter that talks about standards for redevelopment and preservation in our city's historic district and two historic properties. So, looking forward, at this point, the Historic Preservation Commission has adopted or recommended approval of a draft of that document. We are working to schedule a joint meeting with our Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission in January. We think that'll be at the January 8th meeting. We'd like to possibly invite all of you to attend. We won't make it mandatory for you, but we'll have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and HPC for sure, so that they can share ideas and let the Planning Commission know everything that they've been working on and kind of the background of that work. From there, we have formal public hearings scheduled in February, so we've got -- right now, tentatively scheduled Planning Commission hearing for February 4th, and that would likely come before you if it's recommended for adoption on February 12th. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's just a quick rundown of where that work is at.
Just a question. What was the date you were planning to try to get the Planning Commission and?
For our joint work session, we're targeting January 8th this time.
Okay.
Does somebody have a calendar?
That is council meeting day.
That's why I was -- is it an early meeting or?
Not sure. We're still -- we just kind of threw that out.
Okay, we'll be informed.
Yeah, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Yeah, that was why I was kind of having a funny look there, remembering dates. Thank you. Okay. Going to -- I think we have something to do about wastewater.
Mayor, I'm waiting on the engineer. He got held up, so I wonder if we could shuffle the agenda a little bit on that one.
Okay, that's fine. So then, let's go to the fee schedule update. And welcome back.
So, last month, we presented to you a summary of a draft set of amendments to our community development fees, in an effort that we think will make our fee schedule a little bit more transparent for developers. So, over the course of the last couple of years, we've been hearing from the development community that our low base fee is sort of misleading throughout their development applications. So, the way it works now, and you've seen it in the memo that we presented to you, we have a really low upfront base fee, ranging from about 200 bucks to 1,000 bucks, depending on the type of application. The planning staff and the consulting engineering staff fills their time against that deposit, and then after that deposit is exhausted, we invoice applicants for that time spent. Again, that's misleading, especially to those developers and property owners and applicants that don't have a lot of experience with the land use application process. And as a way to improve kind of the transparency, we want to adjust that base fee to be more in line with what they're likely to pay for that given land use application. So, what we're seeking to do, we're really seeking to do three things. We want to up that base fee for our land use applications to more closely reflect the actual cost that they're likely to pay over the life of that application. We want to add some fees for applications that we currently do not charge fees for. We want to add a 10% administrative fee on our invoices going forward, so that we can recoup some of our administrative staff time spent managing, administering, that invoicing. And then we want to add a fee for staff time spent reviewing plans for construction projects that involve both public improvements and private improvements. So, that's what we're looking to do. The subsequent tables that are attached to that memo kind of outline the specific dollar amounts that we're recommending those base fees be adjusted to. I won't go through them in detail. I think I'd like to spend just a little bit of time talking about the blue set of cells in the bottom of Table 1. These are fees that we -- these are land use application types for which we currently do not charge a fee. But we have -- we require an application. It's a -- they're at least a Type 1 review, which means that notice goes to everybody within 250 feet. We have to provide some level of analysis and decision on all of these applications. So, the idea is that we would like to be able to recoup at least some of our time in reviewing these application types for which we currently do not recoup costs, and that was the purpose behind those additional fees. At your last meeting, you received a presentation from your staff that included a new fee for home occupations. We've removed that at the direction of the City Council. Again, it was just a -- just an effort to sort of respond to the amount of time staff spends preparing those applications, providing those notices and so on. Finally, in Table 2, Karen, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down to Table 2, really what that lays out is that -- so, right now, we have a 4% base deposit that is paid by developers when they submit their construction plans, and that's based on the cost of public improvements, and that helps cover the cost for the city to hire either a third-party inspector or for the city to inspect that work themselves. We do not currently charge a fee for the plan review portion of those projects, and since we have a consulting engineer, it's easy for the city to track the time that that consulting engineer spends reviewing those plans, and so the recommendation is really that we'll add a separate fee for the plan review for both public and private projects, and that's kind of what that lays out there. With that, I'd like to just respond to any questions you may have.
Questions for staff? Anybody have questions?
I have questions.
Please. So, in this blue section in the middle, the new fees, I'm really unclear what a lot of those are, so if you could maybe just kind of go through and quickly explain and when they -- how they would be applied.
Perfect. Let's do it. Okay, so, starting at the top, final site design review. Karen, if you wouldn't mind scrolling back up to that, so we can all look. So, this is a fee that would be paid by applicants who have received site design review approval for a project. These are usually commercial projects that have gone through the preliminary review. They've either been approved by staff, or the Planning Commission, or if appealed by the City Council, and now those projects have come back in, usually after they've been constructed, so that we can review certain elements of the construction and the site layout, landscaping, parking, kind of the fine details, do site inspections, and that helps cover that final review to make sure that all those conditions of approval that were added at the time of that preliminary site designer review approval was made.
It's kind of like a final inspection.
That's exactly what it is, on the planning side of things. And so, we have that for building, but we don't recoup any of that cost on the planning side of things. A code interpretation is the next new fee added to that. This is an opportunity for members of the public to seek clarification from staff or the Planning Commission on certain areas of the development code that might be ambiguous. This requires some analysis from staff and a staff report, and then if it does warrant a public hearing to the Planning Commission, we go up to the Planning Commission. A code text amendment, this is something we also don't have a specific fee for. This is -- this would be initiated by a private party where they want to amend certain legislation in our development code. A legal lot determination is similar to, I guess it's a -- the process or the level of effort is similar to what a lot line adjustment is. We very commonly rely on tax lots to kind of help us understand where property boundaries are. However, tax lots don't legally describe real property. They're two different things. So, because we don't have -- because we don't have access to all the deeds and legal descriptions of every single property, but also because tax maps often contain indications of where lines of original platted subdivisions and lots exist, we -- there's a process where a private property owner or an applicant can request that by providing research and documentation from themselves, or from a title company, or from a surveyor, to show that that lot line has not been extinguished, even though it may not coincide with an overlying tax lot. That lot line is legal, and there are, in fact, more than -- more lots or fewer lots than are actually shown by the tax lot. So, and again, it's similar to a lot line adjustment where we're just reviewing to make sure that those lots were indeed, through reviewing this research, were indeed created through some legal means, and those lot lines have not been formally vacated. That's kind of the basis for that process. Can be pretty involved. Final plat review is similar to a final inspection for a subdivision, where we just -- we review -- we review kind of the configuration of all the lots that were preliminarily approved by the Planning Commission, and make sure they meet all of the dimensional standards that the applicant said they were going to provide at that preliminary plat phase. We make sure that all the improvements, all the public utilities have been installed. Everything's been tested and inspected correctly. Again, it's sort of a -- it's kind of a final inspection, making sure all the conditions of approval have been met from the perspective of a subdivision.
Now, is that done before a site review?
This would be -- final plat review pertains to typically a subdivision, which is usually would involve a residential subdivision. So, they're -- they don't typically coincide with one another, right? We -- the next -- and among that list is a non-conforming use or a zoning confirmation. We get letters from time to time from financing institutions and lenders seeking for kind of formal verification that a property can be used in a certain way. That does require -- usually it has to do with an existing structure on the property, and usually has to do with the question of whether or not that improvement on that property is destroyed by some means. Could it be reconstructed? And lenders like to know that, so they can understand their level of risk in lending money on these properties. And so, we need to do a little bit of research to get them that confirmation. It's a formal letter. They always want it on our letterhead, and they usually like us to respond to certain questions. The historic review just pertains to any application in the historic district. We don't currently charge a fee for it. And then the Willamette River Greenway permit, it's a -- we have Willamette River Greenway boundary that is more or less lies east of Main Street. It applies to any new development for properties that are within that boundary, which, again, is generally the area east of Main Street. And there are -- there's a whole chapter in the development code that talks about specific standards for development in the Willamette River Greenway.
Thank you. I would like to go back to the historic review. So, if someone wants to make an alteration to their historic property, whether it's downtown or it's a residential, and it's something they would have to come again to the Historic Preservation Commission, they would have to pay this $150 fee.
Correct.
My concern with that is that we've been working really hard to try to streamline that process and make it easier, and encourage people to do the right thing and come to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'm a little concerned that a fee of, you know, $150 on top of, you know, the new windows they want to put in their house would just be one of those things where they'll say, well, forget it, I'll just install them and, you know.
That's right.
So, I'm a little concerned about that fee.
That's right.
Additional questions? I will join with you on -- I was wondering about the same thing on the historic fee. I had a question as -- sorry, I was jumping ahead. Are the kinds of fees that you're putting here, because I saw you had averages in other jurisdictions, is what you're proposing here, many cities doing it, one city doing it, 25,000 cities? I'm just alert, some level of scale?
Sure. So, the --
A lot folks?
Our suggested fees are based on the fees in the cities of Monmouth, Dallas, our current fees in Independence, Albany, and Salem. For most of the -- for most of those application types, those fees are not the individual fee itself, but the fact that they have a fee is pretty universal, to Councilor Takis' point. Certain application types like historic preservation or historic review, home occupation, cities will often subsidize as a way to encourage people to come in, get a permit, is a way to, I guess, encourage them to just be more consistent with the regulations that are in place, rather than encouraging them to just go and do it without seeking any advice from the city. I would say, by and large, the items that we've added are pretty standard across all cities across Oregon.
Okay, I think I missed something there. You said some cities allow for that fee to be waived, that it's -- they'd like to see people come in.
Yeah.
Now, does that mean that we would have the same -- our building department would have the same right to waive that fee?
No, actually, the point I was trying to make was that certain jurisdictions will not have a fee for historic review. For instance, like we currently do not, certain cities will also not have fees for home occupations, and that's, again, that's a way to encourage those people to come in, not make a burden, and essentially just subsidize that for whatever reason.
My main concern with this, I appreciate the new level of transparency, but I would be concerned if, let's say, prior to this being enacted, someone had -- was doing something on their historic home or on their residence, and the prior fee may have been a total of $400 or $500, and now with all these split outs, maybe the entire fee is substantially more. And is it going to be a very noticeable jump for the average person?
I would say no. Again, the upfront base fee will be more, in some cases substantially more, but the fee over the life of that review and approval should be the same, or roughly the same. Because currently, we invoice all applicants based on our staff times spent. So, if they come in and their initial base fee for their application is $100, you know, it could be $1,000 or $2,000 by the time it's ultimately approved.
And is that disclosed to them in the very beginning?
Yes, in fact, there is a -- we do make them sign and notarize a form that's attached to all of our land use applications that says, "I agree, this is a base fee, and I will be invoiced for future staff time spent that exceeds the deposit." However, so, there's a lot of paperwork that people are signing when they drop it off, and I don't know, even if they do sign it, I think they may forget, or they may just not realize that the additional staff time will be significantly beyond what they originally paid.
So, they're not, at that point, given any kind of a?
Ballpark?
Yeah, ballpark, yeah.
I will provide it from time to time, if it's a fairly straightforward application, but it can be very difficult to know. And also because we bill applicants directly based on our time, a lot of the time we spend has to do with either nonresponsiveness from the applicant themselves and having to continue to work with them or meet with them to give us the information we need, or to kind of prepare some of that information directly with their consultants, and so, really walking them through what we're looking for. So, it can depend on the quality of the consultants they hire. It can depend on a number of factors and really.
And that could certainly be true from someone who's experienced versus not experienced. So, am I understanding it right, that then, when these fees, if they are enacted, that will replace that bite-by-bite financing or the ask for money?
So, we're still going to ask for money if our staff time exceeds that deposit amount. Because that deposit is so much higher, if we do have to send an invoice, it's likely that we'll have to send significantly fewer invoices. And so, yeah, there will be cases for sure when we'll have to send invoices, but the idea is that that will be significantly reduced.
Before I go to Mr. Klein, as we've been having this discussion, I think I need to let everybody know that I own a historic property, and I think I just have to declare that, since we're dealing with a whole class of properties, I don't believe I have a conflict. I'm looking for guidance over here.
Well, I --
Knowing that you're not an attorney.
My opinion, not as an attorney, is that you do not have a conflict because you're dealing with a whole class of properties, and many people in this room probably have historic properties, probably several on council have historic properties.
But I wanted to make sure that I did make mention of that. And I will mention that I also own a historic property. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's in the record. Thank you very much. Excuse me for going off topic. Mr. Klein, you wanted to say something?
So, two things, two issues. I think what Mr. Pence was saying with respect to the historic, the fee on the historic properties, he's basically saying, to the extent that you wish to omit that as a fee from the schedule that's in front of you, it's a perfectly legitimate basis to do so, to encourage people to process those applications for the greater good of the district. With respect to the other piece that you're discussing, Councilor Morton's questions and his responses, the issue isn't so much whether the funds are due and owing. They are due and owing. The issue has been, and in fact, this came up during the course of your campaign, has been when the bill is such a surprise, it creates, you know, a good deal of friction, and frequently, people will just walk away from a project as a result. The bill is still a bill remaining, and basically, the city funds, city property taxpayers have to absorb that cost. So, this is a way to keep the surprises down upfront, and, you know, encourage people to be realistic about how they budget their development processes.
Oh, I was gonna make a motion with the historic review.
Oh, I was gonna make a motion with the historic review.
Did you have a motion?
Yeah, I'm not quite ready for a motion yet. That doesn't mean that I kill it completely and I want to make another comment. I'm just, I'm thinking about the person who has looked at doing this, and they looked at the last schedule and it said $100 deposit or whatever it was, and now this one says $1,700. And it might be helpful if there was something in the way of explanation here that the average cost prior to these new enacted fees was X amount, and with the new fees, it was this amount. So to show a comparative table that it's not enacting something huge and over what was otherwise charged.
Sure. And I believe what you're asking for, I attempted to show in that recent actuals column in that table. Again, we don't have numbers on every single type of application that's listed here, but for those that we do have actual numbers on, you can see that what we're recommending is typically lower than our actual, but close. So I think, I think what we really relied on was what are nearby jurisdictions charging? What is the actual? And let's get us somewhere that's not way, way above what we're currently charging, but somewhere in between there that people can tolerate, but still not be totally taken by surprise when final bills do...
And it seems like something like that would be in a notice of disclosure to people who are applying for things like this. Because many of these folks who are going to be coming have done things before.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm happy to provide something similar to them, to say, if, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, that you're looking for us to provide some information to say, here's what we've seen recent projects come in at, or here's the cost that recent applicants paid.
Right, because, because some of the baselines are coming in so much more than the original ones were.
Sure, yep.
So you're just trying to go for an information?
Information, sure.
Information, sure.
Counselor Hicks?
I was just gonna say, I move to approve Resolution 18-1491, adopting updated community development fees and striking the historic review fee.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. We now have discussion. Does anybody have anything else they want to say, comment, anything? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Motion carries, thank you very much. Ms. Karen, am I, and so I am, do I have the same thing on here twice? Because I have a resolution many fee schedule now, do I need to do that again?
Oh, no, we skipped. I think we're going back to the wastewater.
No, no, I was just in the same issue because on 72.1, development fees, I've got a resolution, I got the same resolution twice, is that the...
Oh, one's just the actual fee schedule itself, one's the resolution with the language, and the other one is...
Oh, okay, that, okay, and so that's, so do we, so we need to approve that one again? So everything's all, thank you. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that we are getting all the right, the right pieces of paper approved. Mr. Klein, to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before we get to the item that I'm here to ask you for your support for, which is the proposed resolution to authorize further DEQ borrowing, Steve Ward, City Engineers, present, his company performed an analysis of the south, the south planning area, the south area of the city, some 250 acres that were brought into UGB in 2008. And I'm here to, he's here to give you a bit of an overview before we dive into the particulars of the request, so I could turn that over to you.
Please. Good evening, and we're glad you made it here.
Good evening, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Steve Ward, I'm with West Tech Engineering. The city has seen a significant amount of interest in the south area, and as we started looking at the south area and figuring out what are the infrastructure needs, it became pretty obvious that the sanitary sewer needs were significant. And that's because, that's because the town is so flat, you can't serve everything by gravity. The south area is called what we call Basin C in the wastewater facilities plan. We broke that down into four different basins. I'm not going to get into a bunch of detail, but we broke it down into basins one, two, three, and four. The south area comprises of basins two and three, and all the wastewater from that south area from basins two and three pumps into a pump station at Ninth Street. Currently, there are five pump stations that serve the entire Basin C area. Some of those are relatively small pump stations, and when we analyzed this work, we decided that we would eliminate some smaller ones and build bigger ones so that the city is not maintaining seven or eight pump stations. When we get all said and done, they'll be maintaining one, two, three, four, four pump stations. So we're gonna take the five and convert it to four. And that's just from an operation and maintenance standpoint. But, and the reason we had to do this is because as developers come in and say, how are we going to develop? We need to have a roadmap that says, this is, this is how we're, this is where we want the pump station, this is where we want the force main, and those types of things. As we study this area, we determined that the Ninth Street pump station, which is an existing pump station, is at capacity. And that's why we're here tonight. And if you look at your wastewater facilities plan, the Ninth Street pump station was built in 1998. Usually we have a 20-year horizon for design of these things. We're 20 years and we're at capacity. And your current facilities plan says that it'll be ready for an upgrade. We have analyzed the pump station, and we've confirmed that it's ready for an upgrade, and that's why we're here tonight. And so what this does is develop a roadmap and tell developers how this area's going to develop, how the sewer's going to develop. The city is taking on the Ninth Street pump station because that serves, that serves a much larger area than just the south area, and the city's proposing to take on the Ninth Street pump station. And then we're working on methods of financing to take care of the other wastewater improvements. There's a total of about $7 million worth of wastewater improvements just to serve the entire Basin C. And so tonight, we're asking for the $2.5 million to deal with the Ninth Street pump station. That's pretty much it, short and sweet. I can give you a lot more detail if you'd like, but that's it in a nutshell.
Sure, there are questions? Who would like to be?
So we talked about possible ways of funding this. It sounded like we would be able to recover most of this from SDC's future as development grows there, they come from SDCs?
The Ninth Street pump station upgrades would be SDC eligible, and I know that's one of the things we've been talking about as an SDC study, and I know that's one of the things the city's going to do. We probably need to upgrade the facilities plan and make sure we have all the cost in there. And you have the same problem, by the way, with transportation and with other facilities, because when the, when the transportation system plan gets done, there's going to be a whole laundry list of things, and we'll have to look at the SDCs. But certainly the Ninth, Ninth Street pump station would be SDC eligible, yes.
Would this be completely a borrowing, or is there any kind of option for grants?
This, we don't think there'd be much grant option here, but again, the borrowing would be secured by SDCs, either those that we've collected or those we anticipate collecting from development in this area. And we are seeing a great deal of development pressure right at this point, pressure that will, you know, we need, we need to have the facilities upgraded to serve. So the answer is, it is going to be in the city's finances, not likely to be from grant fundings, it will be from borrowings, borrowings secured by development costs, development fees.
Questions over here?
Let me add to that, I might as well just sort of run into my report. 2016, you in fact agreed, and we passed a resolution, it's referenced in the current resolution, that authorized some $6.9 million of borrowing, mostly loan, I think there were some grant mix in there. We were not able to get some of the grants for the USDA, so we went through DEQ, who gave us a more attractive rate, so it worked out somewhat in the end. But that amount, we've been working through and spending that money, and I think at this point in time, we're looking at the priority of projects as we did this further analysis. To meet those needs in the south area, it is imperative that we proceed with the Ninth Street pump station. We are looking at dropping one project off, and we had to rebid the River View pump station. If you recall, this summer, the prices came in very high. So you'll see that bid again in January, and we're hoping the numbers come in more attractive. But in the meantime, we'll need the borrowing authority from DEQ. The actual amount that we borrow will depend on what we spend. Likely, we'll drop a project off the priority list, bring that number down. On the flip side, costs have creeped right back up. So that's what we're asking for tonight, is the authority to proceed with that. It is necessary to serve the growth that is coming, and again, it will be secured and paid for ultimately by that growth that occurs.
So effectively, we have to front load this, and then it gets paid back through the SDCs?
Yes.
Okay.
That's your answer.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, this is an action item. Someone would like to?
Someone has a question.
Was there, I, no, okay. If someone would. I'm trying, go ahead.
It's okay, it is recommended that the council approve the request with the following motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 18-1494.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And I have a second. Discussion.
I just have some concern that the community may not have, I realize the need, and I understand the argument, and I know that there is growth going on, but I also know that we have done a significant amount of borrowing over the last three or four years. And yes, there is going to be a return on that, but I have gotten plenty of pushback on, from a variety of people who say, when is all the borrowing going to stop? And I, I would rather see us not do something that's of lesser importance in order to be able to borrow on this and not something else, but I don't know at this time what that would be.
And may I ask a question? By not doing this, that's going to put a crimp on the growth in the southern...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so...
To the Councilor Morton's point, we, it's very likely we'll be dropping off a million and a half dollar project in favor of this C Street interceptor. So it doesn't quite cover the difference, but it gets you much closer. And that's a maintenance project that would have come out of the city rate structure as opposed to SDCs.
I'm glad to hear that the SDCs will be paying for a big hunk of this.
And would that second borrowing that you're talking about, would that have come to council for decision?
Which second borrowing? You've already, you've already passed on that. That's already in the, that is already the list that you approved in 2016. So that's a project that we would...
But this was not.
This was not, it was in your facilities plan, but it was not, it was not envisioned as being the priority that it is today.
The only way I would feel really comfortable voting yes on this is including the caveat of dropping off the other project.
Additional questions, comments? I don't see anybody.
Would there be any issue in rewording that with the dropping off of the other project?
You don't need the C Street, do you? You don't need C Street interceptor in the list?
No, we've camera'd that, and we're fairly confident that we can give quite a few more years of service on it. One of the other things that we were looking at was, we actually just had a pump fail at Ninth Street, so unfortunately needed a complete rebuild. So that rebuild was about $25,000 for the pump that's not keeping up with the current capacity, so we're surcharging. So when you surcharge, you're basically violating your MPTS permit through DEQ. It's basically the pipe and the pump can't keep up with the flow capacity. So we looked at the, a short-term upgrade, a band-aid, if you will, it was about $125,000. So then we looked at, we had to look at the utilization of that basin, and we're at that point where we can start throwing money at it and band-aiding it, or we can, or we can do it...
I get that, it's the used car, new car argument.
I think the short answer to your question is yes, feel free to change the language, drop C Street interceptor off the, you know, as exchange for this project.
I would feel better doing that.
And staff is okay with that, that's...
His staff is certainly okay with that.
How about that staff over there? Who made the motion?
Did you make the motion?
No, we haven't, yeah.
No, I thought we had, yes, we did, and who made the motion?
Diana did.
Diana made the motion?
Diana did.
Oh, I seconded it. Okay, would you accept the change to remove the, what, C Street?
C Street interceptor.
Is that okay to add, removing the C Street? And the seconder was...
I'll agree.
You're okay? Everybody's okay, so, everybody fine? Okay, all in favor of the motion as we just amended, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Now we are going to Sprint franchise renewal, is that the right, am I in the right place?
I think you're at the public hearing. Zach, are you up?
We haven't done the, we haven't done the franchise.
Those were rescheduled.
Oh, those were rescheduled, then yes, you are.
Okay, so I get, we don't let you sit down yet.
That's fine. It'll just give me more memories. So you have in front of you, this one hopefully should be simple, you have in front of you, we spend on, I wouldn't say a lot of effort, but we spend a lot of time, thanks Steve, we have spent a lot of time getting to this point, and frankly, I just said, look, you can strike this all over with a new city manager, we can get to yes, you know, sooner or later or later. So they were inspired, and they, we drew to closure on the Sprint franchise renewal, so that's in front of you. The changes are fairly simple, they're outlined in my staff report. The substance of those changes is a slight increase in the per linear foot cost, it's been, this, let me go back, this franchise has been, it lapsed under its term a long, long time ago, and I don't have that time in front of me, but it's been a lot of years. We have since been extending it six months at a time, and we've done that virtually the time I've been your city manager, until we got to this point. I don't think it's quite as stale as the charter franchise, but it was, but it's pretty stale. So we are now, the previous per linear foot cost was $2 per foot, we did a little bit of survey out there to see what's the going rate, we were actually doing fairly well. They did agree to the 50 cents a linear foot plus CPI adjustment every five years to capture changes, and then they're asking, they're asking for, we conceded, or we recommend approval to you of a 10-year franchise and a couple of five-year options. Again, that would include the CPI adjustments each of those terms. Sprint does really not provide direct service to anybody, they're just, they just pass through the community, so their impact on us is pretty insignificant. So this is really just to provide right-of-way, use of right-of-ways at the market rate. So that said, they've already signed the franchise in anticipation of your doing the same, and we can proceed to closure if that's your wish.
Questions for the presenter? I don't hear any. Okay, is this okay with everybody? If someone would make a move action, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 18-1493.
Second.
I have a motion second, is there a discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. We're down to council announcements, we're going to do announcements first, and we'll get to Mr. Klein. Anybody have announcements?
Why do I always look at Maryland?
January 12th, find out what really happened to Lenora.
Thank you.
Other council announcements? Okay, Mr. Klein, it's convenient that you're standing there, and so I get to speak first. And thank you. I just want to take a moment on behalf of myself and council members in our city to thank you for the service you've provided over a number of years to our community. Your passion for independence, your energy, your intellect, your creativity, your getting after it was really appreciated. Our community, our city is a much better place because of the time that you have spent with us, and it's been a professional pleasure to work with you, and a personal pleasure to work with you over so many things. And the laundry list of things is, of physical additions to our community are many. I think one of the other things that many do not see is that you've created a strong, stable, competent, capable, and creative staff that will do wonderful things in the years to come, and you set the stage for, as I have said before, our best years are yet to come, and every year is a better year than the year before. So on behalf of all of us, I want to say thank you, and also let everybody know that there is a public retirement event honoring you at Valkyrie on Thursday night at...
4:30.
5:30.
5:30?
4:30. 4:30, my mistake, I'm trying to get my 30s right. So 4:30 to 6:30 at Valkyrie, I think there'll be some munchies and drinks around your own, and there'll be a little bit of speechification, although not much. And, and we'll go from there. So with that, I just wanted to help close out your last minute, and as I have promised, I'm getting, giving you the opportunity to have the last word.
Lovely, speechless, thank you. I didn't have a planned speech, thank you so very much, very, very kind words. I've been doing this for 40 years, I've worked in eight cities, I've worked in a number of other places. This is the best. You are the best. This is, excuse me, eight and a half years, you know, as your manager, it's been really special. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity and working with this wonderful team and this amazing community. Thank you.
And we have an Oscar for you.
Someone like to send us home?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.